Are we ready to go? Is that what that okay was?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting for zoning board of appeals. It is tonight, Wednesday, September 12, 2018, and it is 6:30 PM at Room 320 of the multi-service center. Going to call the meeting to order, make a roll call. To my right, our town clerk, I mean, sorry, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My far left, alternate member Jake Morrison, Cal Baptiste Senior, and myself, Nazir Al Kalasi, chairman also present, town engineer, Charles Rowley. We have four members tonight, so you don't have the, you have the right not to be heard with four members, so you could wait for five-member boards. What we do will open the hearing and continue it. If you wish to continue with four, you can. I'm just going to go quick, a few things quick. We're going to do the minutes for August 22nd.
I think I told you by email, but I did review those. They're fine.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Four, zero, zero. Come on, the pen. Thanks. Sorry. We're going to jump to continue public hearing for Dakota Partners, 3102 Cranberry Highway, 2-18. All right, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. We had discussed with your consultant and through Ken Buckland, the board, because we just got the revised draft decision and things, we, we all agree it makes more sense to continue, not have a hearing tonight, but to continue, and I signed the extension already and gave it to your chairman, to continue until two weeks from tonight, which will give Dakota time to review and prepare any responses we want and to have it still in the open hearing forum in two weeks, so that there can be discussion back and forth. Hopefully, in the interim, unlike what happened this last time, we will have some back-and-forth exchange between myself and Ken Buckland and Paul Haverdy, which naturally would be shared with the board members as well, in terms of things that are in the newly revised draft decision and then input that we would put in there. So, you know, that's, I came just to make sure you understood, but that's why nobody from my team is here, and that's what we would like to do. Thank you.
Okay.
So, that's 26th of September?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, just under the Mullins rule, Attorney Kendrick Jan can sit back in the case. She can review it and say.
Yes, yeah, that's because the hearing is still open as opposed to closed, and also we're not having any substantive information tonight.
Wilma can't.
I'm sorry?
Wilma, she can't.
Right, because she had already missed one, I believe, yeah.
You missed one, so.
But that, and on that score, we're willing to go forward with four, assuming that Jan will be back and able to vote. Yes, thank you.
All right. And in 40B, as you know, you need simple majority. You don't need four out of five.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue by Jim till September 26th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Did we vote on the meeting minutes? Did we say yes? I'm making my notes.
I should kind of put this back and see if I can continue.
Where's the meeting minute? I'll find them.
You have it?
No, I got the Robinsons Realty Corp., 3417 NAS. I'm just signing this. Get it out of the way. I'll get it.
Sorry, but we shorthanded, so we don't know where everything is. All right, on 34-17, Robertson Realty Group, asking for an extension. I know she had it right there. This Lembalo has it.
That's Robinson's or is it Jan?
Robinson.
Don't have it.
She should just show it to me. Get me something. Okay, so Attorney Bello is asking for continuance for Robertson Realty Group, 34-17, for six months' extension on a special permit, I think it's for the, sorry, for the variance, for the cell tower. Okay, what do you think?
I make a motion that we grant.
I have a motion to grant by Cal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain.
We're granting extension. Four, zero, did you abstain?
No, no.
Okay.
Four, zero, zero.
Go ahead. Four, zero, zero, okay. You're going to Bush, Bushman next?
No, they both, that Tyler, we have, they're all continuing. It was Lenny's letter.
We have to open it and continue it. Okay, Stephen.
328.
Bushman.
Bushman.
20 Depot Street. He's Bello also?
Request is in the file. You want to read it in and open it and then continue it. Zoning Board of Appeals, a hold a public hearing on September 12, 2018, 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 32-18 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 8, Section 824.1 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Stephen Bushman, care of Bello and Bello, 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., 02571, seeking to erase an existing single-family dwelling and replace it with a new two-family structure in approximately the same location located at 20 Depot Street, East Wareham, Mass., that's on Assessors Map 15, Lot 10003, in the MR30 zoning district.
Okay, let's make a motion to, is there anyone here for this matter?
No.
Let's make a motion to continue.
Motion to continue until the 26th of September.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay.
You here for Depot Street?
We're here for Tyler.
Tyler, it's continued.
We just continued it.
Who's Tyler?
Till the 26th.
Steve Bushman's?
Yeah, 26th.
Yes.
Yep. Same time, same place.
Same time, same place, okay.
Thank you. Okay, 96 Realty LLC, Ferring Hill Road.
Good evening, folks.
Hi.
My name is Robert Perry for the record, and I represent the petition here tonight.
Let us here, read it on record.
The sound.
Zoning Board of Appeals, a hold a public hearing on September 12, 2018, 6:30 PM, Room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 33-18 for a variance slash appeal from the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 15, to 96 Realty LLC, care of Robert Perry, 191 Main Street, Suite 215, Wareham, Mass., 02571, seeking to build on a lot that does not meet building or grandfathering requirements located at parcel A at Ferring Hill Road and Squirrel Island Road, Wareham, Mass., that's on Assessors Map 74, Lot 1009, in the R60 zoning district.
All right, Mr. Perry.
Ready?
Ready.
I'll go forward with the four members, yes.
Okay, let's hear it.
I ask for alternative relief, either overturn the building commissioner or grant a variance. I think the lot is grandfathered. If you look at my cover letter that I gave you this petition, this is a parcel of land, 31,000, some odd square feet, 31,433, triangular-shaped lot. It's on the westerly side of Squirrel Island Road. I have given you with the application a map of the town of Wareham from 1903 that shows Squirrel Island Road in existence at that point in time. So although this parcel came out of a larger parcel, from at least that 1903 date, it was split off from the larger parcel. I've given you a deed, actually a couple of deeds into Ed Leonasumnens' mother and father for the lot on the westerly side of this lot, which was split off in the 1800s. In the 1940s, they deeded that, well, the elder Sumnens died. The lot went to Ed and his wife, Leona, and they then sold the lot to the predecessor of the current owner. So as of about 1943, there was no available land to be combined with this lot. So this lot is over 5,000 square feet, it's got over 50-foot frontage on Ferring Hill Road, and there's nothing else that could have been combined with it since the 1940s. So I really think it's grandfathered. With the building commissioner, I made, I made a mistake in that I didn't give him information on Squirrel Island Road because I was stupid. We go through building commissioners pretty quickly, and I kind of expected the guy would be familiar with Squirrel Island Road. Apparently, he was not. He didn't recognize that it was an ancient way, and he rejected me on that basis. So I honestly believe that in this case, he's wrong, that it is under 48 grandfathered and that he should be overturned. If you prefer not to do that, I understand, and I'm prepared to go forward on my request for variance because, you know, we bring a lot of matters before this board, and this is one of the ones where variance is absolutely in order. The requirements for variance under the statute are all there. So I'd ask you if you.
Which, which parcel is the subject? Parcel B?
A.
A. Let me, let me come up there and show you.
Oh, okay, right here.
Yeah, a little triangle, not little, because it's 31,433 square feet.
31?
31,433.
33?
According to GA.
Parcel A.
Parcel A.
So it's this triangle right here on the corner of Ferring Hill and Squirrel Island?
It is, it is. Way over 180, 180-foot frontage, way over the requisite frontage on Ferring Hill Road, way over the requisite frontage on Squirrel Island Road. Obviously, anybody who built on it would be using the Ferring Hill Road frontage, they use the Tyro Road frontage.
And the 31,433 excludes 81,59?
That's what.
It's used as.
That's what GA shows us, that's correct. The utilized part of Squirrel Island Road.
So it's got a frontage on Ferring Hill, right?
That's correct. On Ferring Hill Road.
And on.
237.6 feet of frontage.
Is this where they put the, the poles for the?
Right, right. It's not building up. Well, I'm going to.
They put the poles there, right?
Yes, on the east side of that lot. Ever so us put their poles in.
Isn't there, isn't there a path going through there, a roadway?
There is, which is a totally different issue than area and frontage.
Oh, you need a 60,000 square feet.
You need 60,000, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, I sort of need a 30,000 there.
No, you know, what did I tell you here? Like nine out of 12 of our districts, you need 30 or less, but this, this one, you need 60. So if you elect not to overturn the building commissioner, then I will tell you why I believe this lot is in order for variance.
Well, we're not, I'm not an attorney, I can't make, you saying you have new evidence you could convince him that it's not, it is grandfathered?
Well, yeah, I think it's grandfathered. I think it's grandfathered in that it has been split off from the other parcel that belonged to Papa George since 1903, at least. Actually, I've been back further in Squirrel Island before on other matters, but 1903 is plenty good enough, because all we care about is, is since zoning came in.
And it's been like this since 1903?
Been like this since 1903.
So one of his bullets in his letter says, sufficient evidence has not been provided to prove when the road was created or as to when the law.
I agree, that's what I said, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
I stupidly didn't tell him when the road was created. I assumed he knew it was an ancient way, so I didn't give him that information that I am giving you tonight.
Okay, is it possible you could go back to him, discuss it with him?
Pardon me?
Can you go back and discuss it with him? If it's a good evidence, so this way you don't even need us. Maybe you could go back and show him that is, that road is ancient and you're all set, then we don't have to go through this.
Well, would you like me to request a two-week continuance? I'll go and do that tomorrow?
You don't need.
You'd like me to.
We got plenty of time.
I don't want to dismiss my petition. I will go back to him.
Yeah, okay.
And I will show him that evidence, and if he approves it.
That's it.
I'll report to you, and I won't be back.
Very good. Why don't we do that?
I'll count on being here the 26th, unless I tell you differently. Fair enough?
So what, before we, another question, sorry. He's, in his bullets here, he's got Lot A was not created prior to Wareham zoning in 1951. How is that relevant?
I couldn't figure that one out, Jim. I'm sorry.
Okay. I didn't know if it was 1951. Okay, so you don't know either, okay.
Well, I assumed that it had to do with the fact that I didn't give him the map on the road, because I can't figure out any other reason that he would say something like that.
Isn't the zoning changed in 69, not 51? Go back to 69.
Well, I, yeah, but I use the 51 just so we don't have to think about when the zoning changed, okay?
All right.
I mean, everything in this lot.
That's fine.
Has been in place since before we ever had zoning in the town of Wareham.
All right.
So I don't have to worry about, is it 69 or 68 or?
All right, okay. Can you guys put it back to where it was?
All right, now let me see, if we go to the 26th, I don't have to waive time, do I? I don't think so, because I think I filed it timely.
Yeah, plenty.
All right, then I'll see you the 26th.
26?
Isn't that your end, Pete?
Yes.
All right, let's make a motion.
September 26th.
Well, you're longer than I have to wait.
Make a motion to continue to September 26th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Thank you, see you then.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Ferring Hill Road.
Okay, he wants to continue, so.
He wants to continue too? He's already read that one in, right?
Yeah, but do you have that letter, Mike? I mean, Jimmy? For Giancola, it's right here. All right, here, same, oh, against Lenny presenting version.
Yeah.
It's a lot on 26th.
So on the 26th, we'll have a meal catered.
I'm here? Stop joking, you're here on that, very funny.
I see the superintendent of the sewer department sitting in the back of the room. I wonder if he's here for Dakota, and we've already continued that.
Oh, yeah, I can leave.
Guy, yeah, sorry.
You're dismissed.
We did, you continue until 26th.
I saw you sitting back there, and I didn't want to make you sit to the end.
I'm enjoying it, but if I don't stay, I don't.
Oh, you can stay, yeah.
And we're happy to have you stay, but.
I appreciate that.
But I'm sure you'd be happy to go spend some time with your family, too.
So, thank you much.
Yep.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay either, Mary?
Yeah.
All right. I know how to thin out a room.
Okay.
Back to Giancola.
Yep.
Make a motion to continue until 9:26.
We have too much, let's push it, October 10? Can we ask Lenny if he's available?
Is he asking for 9:26? He's asking for 9:26.
9:26, all right, 9:26.
Okay, so let's hope that some of these are, you know, pretty easy to work through.
All right.
So I'm making a motion to continue to 9:26.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor to continue 418 till September 26th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, so that's.
Next one is RMRM Realty.
Okay, RMRM Realty, 3035 Cranberry Highway.
That's Waterways, correct?
Yeah. Public hearing's still open, counsel, right? Public hearing's still open, right?
It is, you're, it is.
Just need the name and address for the record.
My name is Richard Cirque, attorney for the petitioner.
Tony Stella, civil engineer for the petitioner.
Patricia Kells, owner.
Okay. Last time you were here, Jake, you were in a case last time?
I was.
What time, what was he, what's the last date you were here? I'll tell you in a minute.
We were, we were last here.
It's on here.
August, no, August 15th was the conservation commission.
August you weren't here?
August, August 8th.
You are 17-18. You were here on August 8th. Okay, Jake, Jake wasn't here. Here's the deal, you got three members.
Just, hold on a second.
He was here.
Just one moment. Jake, were you here on the 8th or?
No, it's right here.
Not on the 8th.
It's right here, I got.
Okay.
So you're missing Jan and, so were they, did we do anything on the 8th? We just continue.
July 25th.
It was a continuance, wasn't it?
It was July 25th.
I don't think we discussed anything.
And Mr. Morrison was there then.
Yeah, we didn't discuss anything on the 8th. It was continued because of the conservation issue.
Correct.
Yeah.
So July 25th.
On July 25th, Mr. Akabachi, Mr. Al Kalasi, Mr. Baptiste.
Jake was here, yeah.
Ms. Kendrick and Mr. Morrison were here.
Yeah. Okay, you want to continue, four members?
Well, would you like to hear from us?
Yeah.
And then, if necessary, we'll continue it for, and the fifth member can, can listen to the tape or view the audio, and we can vote on it the next time.
Let me see how many she missed. She missed only one, she can. Well, there is only, yeah, Jan, she missed only one. She can review tape.
Okay.
And she could sit on it. All right, let's hear it.
So then let's get some stuff passed out. There anything in, from before that we need to review? Let's see what we got here. Here's a, here's a set of plans.
When we were last before you, we were about to go to the conservation commission.
Yeah.
And Mr. Stella's going to bring you up to date as to what happened with the conservation commission.
Okay.
Well, basically, last time, like I said, we were here, there was, there were a couple of questions regarding the surface, the treatment, and then, at the same time, there was some, we were under enforcement order from the conservation commission, because the contractor apparently cleared too large an area, actually encroached into the 50-foot no disturbs zone. Since that time, he has, we've gone to the conservation commission, they requested of us a planting plan, which is before you, done by a landscape architect. The, that plan was approved last Wednesday night, and the only stipulation is that the plants be planted by the middle of, no later than the middle of October.
Okay. Is that plan there, that's what we have in front of us?
I have, I did forward everything to Mr. Rowley. I do have copies of plans for everyone, and.
I think it's right here.
Thank you. You've got a couple extras, I'll throw them in the folder. If you get an extra one, I'll throw it in the folder. Thank you, thank you.
So when we come the next time, I'll be able to spread them around, you know? Okay. So, as of now, the conservation commission apparently has, has approved or is, is okay with what we're proceeding, on us proceeding with this work. And I believe the last time we were here, there was, there was a couple of questions that Mr. Rowley had regarding the surface and the topography between the 100-foot buffer and the 50-foot no disturb zone. Since that time, we've, we've actually done a topographic survey of that area, as well as, they've also cleaned that area up. The topography shows that the grades are relatively flat, or seem to be reasonable in terms of being able to park cars on it. And the material that was used to, to, in that area that was actually rolled and compacted is a gravelly material, very, pretty, very stable. The pictures show that the materials, is a granular material that is not much different than the material that you, was used over the, to cover the existing building after it was demolished. Beyond that, that's all, I believe those are the only two issues that, that were still outstanding.
Do you have any drainage details in the parking lot?
There is no drainage, and there was no, we're not changing the surfaces at all. The conservation commission don't require any drainage mitigation.
They didn't require any drainage?
No. The whole idea is we're clearing the area between the 100 and the 50-foot buff, no disturb zone.
Yeah.
And just clearing and just taking whatever surface is there, you know, rolling, compacting it, and allowing cars to park on it. We weren't changing, we were, we weren't adding any impervious surface, we weren't changing any of the surface materials.
And what are you going to do with all the water running from the pavement?
It'll do exactly what it was doing before. There really, again, there's no new pavement, the area, you know, the area, the runoff will be heading in the same direction as it originally headed, which is towards the well and area.
So where are you really looking from us?
Well, I think there were a number of issues that we had worked. I thought last time, we had, we had come to an agreement on just about every issue. I think the last two were Mr. Rowley's issues regarding the slope in that area that was vegetated, but now has been cleared since, and the material, the surface material. I think that's what he was, that was the concern, if I'm not, if I remember correctly.
Conservation doesn't have an issue with the.
No.
They approved it.
So you're looking, you're looking from us to approve your, what, parking lot?
Site plan approval.
If, if I personally want to improve, grant a site plan permit, you have to follow the rules of a site plan.
We.
Otherwise, just keep it the way it is. Don't bother us, just keep parking, keep doing what you're doing, if you have no problem conservation. This is my concern.
Well, we were dealing with a decision from the building and. Well, we were dealing with a decision from the building inspector, and we appealed his determination that we needed site plan approval, and in the alternative, we're applying for site plan approval because he denied us at the outset approval to proceed in what we were doing. So we appealed his determination that we needed approval, and then in the alternative, we're seeking site plan approval to do what we have done, to allow this property to be used as a parking lot. It's separately owned, and it's being used in conjunction with, in, in service of the use being...
That's fine, you could use it with any junction you want, but my concern, if I'm gonna, if personally I want to say yes to a site plan approval, you're asking for like fifty waivers to keep, I mean, there's a lot of waivers.
Yeah.
You have, you have the list of waivers you want?
We, we, we listed in our application, site plan approval and a variance from the otherwise applicable submission requirements and guidelines of site plan approval because of the, because of the unique nature of what's going on here. It's not, it's not a use that's being created in a vacuum, independent of what's going on next door.
So if con, so if you satisfied Conservation?
Yeah.
What is, what does ours say?
If you want us to say, if you want a site plan approval, you have to obey with the rules and regulations.
Do they need a site plan?
I don't know. Do you need it?
Do you need the site?
Well, here we go. Here's the, here's the builder inspector's four reasons for, this is the four reasons why they're here.
Okay.
Article seven, section seven sixty says, which is design standards and guidelines for commercial district. Article seven is an area of the zoning bylaw that must be looked at for compliance in the creation of new parking area. Okay, so we're looking at it because it's considered a new parking area. The next bullet, article nine, section nine ten, parking administration. The number of parking spaces required for a category not listed in the parking table must be determined by the building official. That would be the building. Due to the existing parking deficit of three hundred and fifty-one spaces, my determination is that the deficit shall be the requirement.
But he's, what he's doing is, he's considering this lot in conjunction with the entire amusement park.
Correct, correct.
We don't have to. I don't, I totally agree. We don't have to, but we don't have to waive the other stuff.
His third point, article ten, section ten sixty, landscaping parking lots. The requirements for newly created parking lots are specified in section ten sixty and must be considered in the current proposal, must be considered. Article fifteen, section fifteen twenty, site plan review applicability, and I think this is the one.
Right.
That gets us here. A site plan review is required when a change of use occurs that requires ten or more parking spaces.
And, and the point here is that there's no change of use being required that requires ten or more parking spaces, because the use of this property is to be parking, period. It's not as though there's any use being put on this property that requires parking. The use is parking, and so perhaps the best solution is the first one that I, that I, that I offered, which was an appeal from his determination that I need site plan approval. If you uphold the appeal that I need site plan approval, then we can go with the Conservation Commission approval that we've gotten, and you don't have to deal with the issue of all of these guidelines that are in, that are inherent to site plan approval.
Okay, but we, in our bylaw, we're not allowed to just create parking lots. You can't just have a parcel as a parking lot without a structure.
Where does it say then?
I'm, I'm pretty sure. Am I Charlie?
There's no...
I, I did ask, I think, the inspector. You can't just have a parking, which is, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no specific listing of parking lot in this particular zone, but it's inconceivable to me that the use of a parcel in this zone for parking would be considered prohibited. It's inconceivable to me.
I, I, I'm, I'm fine, and I'm willing to waive this if it's the case. I don't have a problem with parking lots. I'm not, I don't have a problem you combine it with the other place to create more parking lot. The only thing I have a problem, I can't waive everything in the bylaw for a parking lot. But I don't have a problem to give you as many parking as you get fit, as long as you, somehow, for another applicant, if you come behind, before us, say, what, you give this guy to park, how many cars in this parking lot? How many cars?
I think what it boils down to...
Twenty-one, twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety.
One oh four.
One oh four. I know myself, I did a project. I have like hundred cars, and it required about hundred catch basins, hundred chambers for drainage.
But, Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that in your case, you had a use on that property that required parking, and then you have to make your parking conform with the guidelines in the bylaw. In this particular case, the parking is the use, and so I suggest that the, the way to distinguish this case from all of the others that have come and may come before you is to say, since the parking is the use, the way to avoid having to comply with all of these is to say that I don't need site plan approval, and that...
If a structure goes on that property, then we have to go.
Exactly.
That's a new application. I think what we have to determine, and the way I'm, I'm reading this fourth bullet, and I'm, again, it says, a site, his opinion is a site plan review is required when a change of use occurs.
There's no change of use.
There's no change of use.
So if we find that there's no change of use, then we can say, throw that bullet out and leave.
Right, and I...
I've been parking before anyways.
In, in simple language.
I have, I have applied in the alternative, and the first, the, the first option that I gave you was that I'm appealing his determination that I need site plan approval.
So I think what's in front of us right now is we have to determine if we feel as though a change of use has occurred.
I don't feel it has.
I, I gotta say, I agree with you. It was a parking lot before, it's a parking lot now. The only thing that's different is I can't get any wonton soup anymore.
Charlie, what, did you have a chance to look at it?
You know, Ken, your determination's over there.
I say there's no change of use.
The only thing I have to go on, there's two plans here. Did take a look at it. Lots of issues, a couple of issues there, but if we're gonna go by these plans, they go back to the Conservation Commission.
Conservation approved everything.
That's not, yeah, that's...
That's not us.
It's not us.
And Conservation approved everything. I'm, I don't feel it's, it needs a site plan. Conservation doesn't have an issue with the drainage. It's not up for us to say, and I make a motion we grant.
My only two sense is that I don't understand why the Hong Kong Island sign remains, and I said that before, and I, I just feel as though, this is just kind of off-subject, but I just feel as though Cranberry Highway's cluttered enough that we don't need to continue with signs that are useless and, and confusing. If somebody is confused and they're looking for a Chinese restaurant, and they can't find it, they might get disoriented and get in an accident. So I think it's a hazard. I think it should go. That's just my personal opinion.
I totally agree, and we, I spoke actually with David Renquin about changing the sign, and it seemed like it was very involved, and I didn't want to put Waterwiz parking because we do not want people...